We'll call the September 28th meeting of the Planning Commission. I'm sorry, 20... We'll begin with the pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Wow. Let me go out and come in again. Would you call the roll, please, Jess?
Mr. Valeri.
Here.
Mr. Varga.
Here.
Mrs. Simperman.
Here.
Ms. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Perkovic.
Here.
Mr. Sedoti.
Here.
Mr. Snow.
Here. Entertained a motion for the approval of the minutes of September 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Jess?
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman.
Yes.
Ms. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. We have six public hearings this evening, correct, Mr. Spence?
Correct.
The format we follow for the public hearings is we allow the applicant an opportunity to tell us what they want to do, then those wishing to speak in favor are afforded a similar opportunity, then those wishing to speak against are given their opportunity to speak. So with that in mind, the first public hearing this evening is a rezoning of 2.61 acres from our four single-family residential RVG. I see the applicants here. Come forward, identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Good evening, Greg Summers, Summers Real Estate Group. We are here this evening to propose adding the two adjoining parcels to the original rezoning of the RVG of the primary parcel that we had already gotten rezoned. A few comments. On the last meeting, we had some feedback on the two lots that were fronting Jackson Street, and we worked with our land planner to reconfigure that, so they're now part of the new community, and they will not front the main road. There'll be adequate landscaping and buffer between those two lots, Jackson Street and the residence, directly to the east. And we've also reviewed and addressed all the other initial concerns with the administration. Couple other things, by adding these two parcels, in terms of benefits, it allows us an area for retention that's already there, increases the site distance. To maximize safety, it basically gives us maximum site distance, where we've relocated the entrance by acquiring these other two parcels. And it also, I spoke with this homeowner, actually this afternoon, and acquiring that parcel and moving the entrance down, it basically solves a potential headlight mitigation issue with her house. So we are glad that was able to happen by acquiring that parcel. And we also submitted the utility availability letters based on their last meeting. So with that, open to questions and would respectfully request recommendation for approval.
Okay. With that in mind, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Is there anyone wishing to speak against? Would you come up and identify yourself for the clerk, please?
I can't say that I'm against, but I have some issues that I'd like to be addressed.
That's fine.
We own the property east, immediately east of there.
I need you to identify yourself.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Terry Lilly, 9174 Jackson Street in Mentor.
Okay, now go right ahead, thanks.
Okay. We own the property immediately east of there with the larger pond. We've been there for 17 years. First, I want to point out that the configuration of the creek is inaccurate on there. That creek follows both ponds to the north of the ponds, and it goes across to, across the property east of us, and then it goes south onto the nursery property, and then it goes underneath Highsland. It does not end in that pond. So is someone redirecting it, or is it just wrong on there?
Okay, we'll get you an answer for that.
Okay. We've been there for 17 years. We wanted to know if the creek flooding is going to be a problem. The city dredged and widened that creek 17 years ago, on our property, the property west of us, and the property east of us. And they rebuilt a bridge on our property. They said they would line it with concrete to keep it from eroding because it's soft soil. Well, it has eroded, and it's narrowed again, especially on the east side of our bridge. And I'm just concerned if, are they going to address the creek flooding in this development so that it doesn't back up onto our property?
Okay, we'll get you an answer to that one, too.
Okay. The other thing is, are we going to be forced to tie into the sewer or sidewalks because this housing development is going in there?
Okay, that would be the third one, we'll get you an answer for that one, too.
Okay. One concern we've had, and I know the neighbors have contacted the city about this a number of times, as well as myself. Up until a few years ago, we saw coyote occasionally, and always on the south side of the creek. After the deer kills started, we see them a lot more, and they are getting very bold, coming very close to our homes. They always come from the southwest woods area and return there. In contacting the city, they have taken the position they are not going to address this growing problem, telling us we have to purchase and treat our property with something that has to be applied every 30 days, and it's not cheap. If you had people hunting and killing the food source, you should be responsible for fixing the problems with the coyotes, especially now that homes, people, and pets, and children will be in the midst of that very area.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And we'll get you answers for those questions. Anyone else wishing to speak against, or just ask questions? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Summers, if you come back. Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
Well, as far as the coyotes, I mean, we have natural resource guys, so that's who they should call on that.
Okay.
If that's what they told them, then I don't have any further comments on that.
In terms...
How about the flow of the water?
The flow of the water, their residence is upstream from where our community is being built, and we will not restrict flow or do anything that would...
That would jeopardize anything there?
No, absolutely not. We wouldn't be allowed, nor would we. Actually, the city, they widened those culverts when they did that, the stream work years ago, and there's really large concrete reinforced culverts. And the creek on our property where they put the concrete in has not eroded, so I don't know if it's... But we're actually downhill from where they're at.
So you sit lower?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no way that we're going to increase flow or have any inadvertent effect on that potential issue. And in terms of the actual visual representation, that is not in engineered drawing. It's basically a generic rendering, so that's not showing how the creek actually flows precisely. It just, basically, they take it off the auditor site to give you a color representation of some of the water features there. But on the stream where it flows on our property, that part is accurate to the point where we know that we're not going to be intruding into those creek setback areas or inadvertently impacting the creek or anything like that.
Okay.
And any other questions that... Oh, they will not be forced to tie in to the sewer by us running it to our project.
Okay. I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Anything else that you'd like addressed?
Other than the coyote?
Well, Mr. Spence indicated that that's ODNR, or subdivision of what?
Anytime you just call the city, that's the answer we get. We have, as property owners, we're responsible, we take the terrible ourselves.
Right.
The cost on that is not cheap. Not cheap.
Okay, Mr. Zeeman, anything you can add to that?
Yeah, wild animals are considered property of the state. And so, just like you have to get a license to hunt deer during deer season, or you get tags if you're, you know, in agricultural use, and they're eating your crops, addressing the natural predator issue is something that, as Mr. Spence indicated, we'd have to get natural resources involved with.
Okay, so we're not skirting the issue, but it's not our jurisdiction there?
So how...
We, in other words, we can't just trap and kill them. I mean, we have to, there have to be some program, and nor am I suggesting that that's the way to go. I don't want to be misunderstood in that regard, but it's not a, it's not a simple issue.
So what would you suggest that this lady do?
Well, I think we'll give her some resources. I think part of the problem is, you know, to make sure that she's speaking to the right individuals. So we'll get her contact information, and we'll follow up and see if we can get her some answers as to appropriate ways to address it.
So you can get her contact information after the meeting?
We're going to try to do that, yeah, but again...
Is that okay? Okay, good. Okay, back to you, Mr. Summers. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, just questions from the commission, I think.
Okay, we'll open it up for the commission.
We addressed her concerns on our end, so...
Commission members' questions for the applicant or the administration.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
Just a simple question. I notice in the plan that you have, there appears to be an existing building still in the corner up there. Is that meant to be there, or is that...
That's just a representation of where the structure will be, but part of our plan will be to demolish those structures.
Okay, so that's all I was getting at, is that the existing building in that upper corner is not planned to stay there?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, there's a homeowners association that will be responsible for certain aspects of this, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to ask that, that should the homeowners association dissolve at any point, that the city be notified of the dissolution of the homeowners association? So I know we've had some property management issues that have occurred because homeowners associations have gone away, and I think it would behoove, Mr. Zeeman, how would you like to see that addressed?
Yeah, well, undertaking review of their decks now, that's difficult to do with this form of ownership. It's actually, it's basically impossible to do with this form of ownership because the association's going to own all the common areas, the roadways and all that. We've run into that problem where we've got more of a traditional subdivision, and there's just some open space which is separately partialled. It's that, those are the associations we've run into trouble on.
Okay.
But this is a hybrid, and so for them to dissolve it...
So you're not concerned here?
Not like I would be with, you know, an R4 or something where we were dealing with fee simple, and the streets were dedicated, and we were dealing with some separate parcel somewhere.
So, commission members' questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Simperman.
Hi, Mr. Summers.
Hi, Howard.
You were pointing to a house. What was the address of, you said you had just acquired a property across the street? What address was that? You said for a light mitigation?
It was just a resident that was concerned about headlight issues.
Okay.
And it was, you see at the, this resident, her name's Kathy Jo Kaiser. Originally, we had, before we acquired these, to make these two parcels part of the community, we were going to use that existing driveway at one point, which would have went right into her house.
Okay.
She hadn't seen an updated drawing.
Oh.
I told her about the natural evolution of us buying these other parcels. We were able to relocate the driveway, and it alleviated her concern. So it was kind of a natural evolution, and sorry if I'm...
I completely misunderstood.
Yeah, no, we didn't...
Now you're buying properties across the street?
Yeah, no, we, we're not doing that, so...
My bad.
But it just, it worked out well. I told her, and I also mentioned that, you know, if by chance, and we don't, she wasn't concerned there's any issues that we... I put it in writing that we'd plant some pine trees, or if there are any issues with that, that we would take care of it.
Okay.
Just like we did on Maple Street, there was a few, so...
Right, right, that was good.
Yeah, that was good.
And then in the staff report, they mentioned the fact that we'd like to keep as many natural trees there, preserve any trees that we have. And the other question I had was, you'd, somewhere in the staff report it mentioned gazebos, so I'm presuming that on the preliminary, we'll see where you're replacing all these, okay?
Yeah, we'll submit, we'll submit a detailed landscape plan with all the green space, the functional green space features, and show all that in detail like we did for Lake Shore.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What?
I was going to suggest stipulation number four be amended, that sidewalks shall be installed on Jackson Street and on the private drive connecting to the open space areas as part of the preliminary subdivision plans. There may be issues with stalling sidewalks on Jackson Street due to the sphere drop, elevation. It might not be possible, and I guess what I'd rather explore that when it comes to subdivision review.
Earlier rather than later, right?
Well, not as part of the rezoning.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, we include the condition to be part of the subdivision, but it...
That's fine, right?
We're, yeah, we're going to follow the lead, whatever the city would like to do. It just, there's a real severe slope there, so to try to, I mean, we talked with Rick about it. It's going to be pretty tough to put sidewalks in there. Plus, if we went down, then we'd be knocking trees over. Again, we'll follow the lead of whatever the city would like to do with that.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
Motion to approve with six conditions, with an amendment to condition number four, that be part of the preliminary plan.
That's good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Jess?
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman.
Yes.
Ms. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Second public hearing, conditional use permit to allow temporary event at 7634 Tyler. Is that applicant here? Would you come up and identify yourself for the clerk, please?
Hello, my name's Robbie. I'm an owner of a car audio manufacturing company.
And what do you want to do with that location?
We were going to host a sound competition for fans, supporters, and people that support our brand. We're going to have roughly between 80 to 100 vehicles, and it's going to be a fun meet and greet for people to come together. There's also going to be, like, classic cars and that sort of nature as well, not just sound systems.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
Yeah, the police chief indicated that the, if there's a noise ordinance, that any noise originating from a vehicle, if it's audible over 100 feet, it's a violation of the sign code. The police chief thought that there was no way that this event would comply with the sign code if you, the loc, the sound, right? What did I say?
You said sign.
Sign.
We know what you meant.
Sign code. Anyway, if you look at this plan, across the highway, you have the Horvitz Pond, Detention Pond, and then you have the Presidential Street. This event is from 12 to 7:00 PM on Sunday, and I guess my concern, and the police chiefs, would be that... I mean, the whole thing of this event is to see who's got the loudest sound system, so I don't know how they could meet the noise ordinance.
Well, let's ask. How can you meet the noise ordinance when you can't travel over 100 feet with the noise?
Okay, we chose, that's why we signed up for the conditional use permit. We chose the location because of, that being north is State Route 2, and then you have the new walls that you guys built to prevent noise from going over to the residential areas. South of us is the railroad tracks, and the neighboring businesses are all closed. My neighboring businesses, I went to all of them. Clevea Moto is going to be opening up for the first time on Sunday for the extra foot traffic. Around the local area, like I said, everyone's closed. More than 100 feet, yes, I admit that that could happen at times, but the residential locations that we're talking about are well over 100 feet. And this is a secluded location in an industrial zone. Our landlord approved of it, and we're growing really big as a company, and we have a lot of people in the local area. So we want to bring everyone together for them to show off, have a fun meet and greet, and for people to come together, and that sort of nature. This isn't meant to disturb the peace. This isn't meant to cause any trouble or anything like that for the city. I tried to call the, and sent an email to Mentor Police a couple days ago, and haven't gotten a response. I wanted their feedback a little bit more before coming to you guys.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sedoti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll get back to you, Mrs. Simperman.
I can't say that I've ever been to an audio competition. So what is the car, one car puts their audio system on, and you've got judges, and then the next car competes with that car, and so on and so forth?
No, is this more of a come together? If you're someone that has a unique vehicle or a unique sound system, it's a place where you can come, and then other people are going to be walking around, other fans and supporters, and then you get a chance to listen and see what they're capable of. This isn't a competition to be who's the loudest. It's for people to come together, and like I said, have a meet and greet, and show off their capabilities and stuff like that.
So it's more like a trade show?
It's more like a car show, because there's also going to be vehicles, like classic muscle cars. There's a lot of family and friends coming, there's people out of state coming. It's, I just feel like the location that we have, I don't feel it's going to be any impact on any neighboring people or causing any disturbances. I mean, like Quaker Steak Hoax Bike Night, and DNS, they have car shows with loud exhaust and stuff like that. Bike Night at Quaker Steak, that connects to 100 feet and stuff like that, and that sort of nature in a more populated area. I just feel like my event is supposed to be for fun, entertainment, and not to the purpose of what the police are saying for trying to be too loud. As you said, the closest residential to us is past State Route 2, which is almost a couple football fields away.
Okay, Mrs. Simperman.
You've been to the site, right?
Yes.
Okay. Because I went there on Tuesday, and there is no barrier wall on the other side of State Route 2 at that location. So there's no wall to prevent any sound from coming. Now, you said in your application that there's going to be 40 to 80 vehicles, and then you said just recently that there's going to be 80 to 100?
Yes, it's more of a turnout, correct.
Okay. Now, you said there wasn't a competition, but let's say I'm visiting the site. Is it possible that while I'm visiting, you know, with one car, somebody else could be visiting with another car and another car, and we could all be listening to different sound systems at the same time?
Correct.
So combined, then, I would be listening to a lot of music?
At some points, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Valeri.
Hours of operation, 7 o'clock. Can you cut that down? I know you're...
Yes.
A few days away.
Correct.
I've got a child that goes to bed at 7:00. I think just for me, it's the timeframe. I mean, if we can cut that back to, I think 5:00 o'clock may be better for, from a noise perspective, I...
Yeah, if they said he wants that recommendation, of course, but like I said again, we're in a light manufacturing area.
I understand.
Correct.
I'm trying to help.
Yes, thank you.
I would have no issue if you change your hours till 5:00.
Correct, of course, no problem.
And so if you're from noon to 5:00, would you be okay with that?
Yes, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Zeeman.
Yeah, the reason the police chief, you know, red flagged it is because the proposal said we are hosting a high-end car audio competition, and every vehicle that attends will be allowed to have their car professionally metered to give them an idea of their sound capabilities. So, you know, I prefer that there be some type of, by the applicant, some type of amendment to that application before the commission acts on it, because as presented, this was supposed to be a competition, and I don't know why you're having your audio systems professionally metered unless you're going to crank them up to whatever maximum they're capable of doing. So that's what the police chief was reacting to, and what Mr. Spence was indicating as well. They're going to be out there, and if they're doing exactly what was submitted on the application, people are getting sighted, and it's going to get shut down, and not to mention, yes, you're going to be able to hear that in residential areas, and many of those businesses are not 9 to 5, Monday through Friday operations, but they are 24-hour facilities as well. So if this is as presented, there's absolutely no way it's not going to result in, and it's not a question of zoning issue. These are the general laws. These are, these are general and traffic offenses that are being enforced. So there's no waiver of that, there's no zoning issue, there's no conditional use, which allows you to go out there and violate a criminal law. So again, I think in the strongest words possible, that the notion of these sound systems getting cranked up and it being a competition, or for metering purposes, needs to, that needs to fall by the wayside, quite frankly.
How do you respond to that?
Like, I respond by stating that, like I said, we've had many customers come to us and stuff like that, and they have their systems very loud, and it's very hard to hear it from 300, 400 feet away. And I just, I still don't see, I mean, the reason why we picked this location, like I said, was on a Sunday from 12 to 7:00 because that's when there's no businesses operating close, our businesses and our whole facility is closed. The west and right on the exhibit are also closed.
See, but you'll understand it, Mr. Zeeman pointed out...
Of how far he's...
Well, no, what it said was on the application, it's a competition. I mean, that's the concern. That's where the flag got raised with the police department. So how do you respond to that? Is it a competition, or isn't it a competition?
Well, there's going to be awards and stuff like that, correct, but as far as like...
So it is a competition?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with five conditions, amending number one, hours of operation from noon to 7:00 to noon to 5:00 PM.
Number two.
And then number two, live amplified music will be limited to no later than 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jess, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
No.
Mrs. Simperman.
No.
Ms. Morris.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
No.
Mr. Snow.
No. So what is it?
Three to four, denied.
Denied, it's denied, three to four. You had three affirmative votes, four negative votes. Mr. Zeeman, you need a finding of fact on this?
Please, Mr. Spence, Mr. Snow.
Thank you.
Mr. Varga.
I take the advice and the recommendation of the police chief.
Mrs. Simperman.
I did all what Mr. Varga said, and then also, I don't think it's in harmony with our ordinances.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes, I agree, it's a violation of the noise ordinance. That's why I asked the question, audio competition, and the sounds are going to be metered, and it has too much potential to actually violate the ordinance.
Mr. Snow.
I would agree with the comments made earlier, and also the fact that it's, it's a violation. I mean, you said it's a competition. That's what the police chief read and saw, and decided that it probably wouldn't be appropriate. So I got to go along with the chief in this case. So, so there you have it.
Do I have any objections or anything along those lines, or is that it?
No, that's done.
Okay, thank you, Jess.
Condition use permit to allow commercial recreation facility at 7875 Mentor Avenue. Is that applicant here? Aren't you glad you're here now, right? If you, identify yourself for the clerk, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Scamoneisi. This is my husband, Joe Scamoneisi. We're here this evening to, with Kitty Jungle. We're here this evening to seek a conditional use permit to open a facility in the Mentor City Shopping District. We currently have a location in Lynnhurst. Kitty Jungle, it's an indoor playground for children ages seven and under. It's a place where parents bring their children, they can stay for a few hours, stay for the day. It's geared, you know, again, towards children ages seven and under. We have a big play structure that's all soft padded, foam, so it's ideal for young kids, so they can't really get hurt on anything. There's also like train tables, kitchen sets, Lego tables, you know, different things like that for young kids to play with. We also host birthday parties on the weekends. Our hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 10:00 AM to 7:00, and then on the weekends, at our current facility, we're closed to the public and just open for birthday parties.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak, anyone to speak in favor? If you did that in for yourself, please.
My name is Michelle Fair, and it's spelled F-E-H-E-R, and I represent the Glimpser Group Incorporated. And we are, we believe that this would be a good use in this center, and would benefit the other tenants that are there.
Okay. Go right ahead.
I'm Justice Scamoneisi, Mrs. Husband, as you mentioned. I think it would obviously help what she said, the economic activity in the area, and as my spouse said, that it's designed for kids seven and under. The reason for that is sometimes older kids can be more aggressive, so that's why it's just for that age group. And as far as the safety is concerned, everything's soft pad. I mean, if you think of a library, and there's like rough edges, we do the best we can to keep everything safe.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
Yeah, conditional use permits required for commercial recreation uses in the B2 district. Then we just had two conditions that they address the city engineer and fire department comments as part of the building.
You've read those conditions? You're in agreement with those conditions? I'm sorry, Mr. Spence, didn't mean to cut you off.
Fine.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant or the administration? Yes, Mr. Gris.
Will you be serving food at this location?
At our current location, we're registered in Cuyahoga County as a Level 1 facility, so when we serve food, we're serving like packaged, prepackaged stuff that's already like, yeah, we're not doing any active cooking or anything like that, bottled water, et cetera.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Simperman.
So you said this is for children that are seven and under, so I'm, I'm getting the impression that maybe it's for the preschool age, basically, and pre-kindergarten. So if a family has, we're basically looking at families that have children, so if you have a child that's older than that, they're not allowed to be at the facility?
Child that's older than that, everybody's welcome at our facility, but they wouldn't be, they'd be more of a, a helper role, not, you know, like a parent would. Like, for example, parents shouldn't be climbing on, you know, equipment designed for ages seven. Other kids that are older than seven would participate in the role, their parents may be watching their younger siblings.
So they're allowed in the facility? Do they have to pay to participate?
No.
Okay. But the younger children do have to pay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga? I think it's a great thing, I think it's positive and all that. My, my only thought was that the entrance of this is right along a driveway. And my concern, or the only issue I was thinking about is, it can, is there anything we can do? Create a crosswalk, or put up some signage, or, you know, or, or work with the center to, you know, put up small children crossing or something so that there's some protection? You know, they're all young children and they walk out the door and the driveway is right there. Is there something that could be proposed to some signage, some, maybe a crosswalk or something like that?
Um, I think it's something that we could work with them on.
At our current location, Lynnhurst, we do have a sign that says, you know, children crossing, we want to take every precautions that, that, we, we wouldn't have no problem putting up a sign in the facility, especially as parents are leaving. But generally, all the children are accompanied by guardians.
So I would want to make that a, a requirement, that there's some kind of signage or crosswalk. I don't know, I don't know if a crosswalk is appropriate, because you're just walking into parked cars on the other side.
There's also a, um, a kids karate center that'll be right next to them, that is right next to them currently now, so-
So, let's, let's say signage, something mounted so that people can see small children crossing, you could slow down or something like that. You want to make that a stipulation?
Yes, I want to, I want to make that a stipulation.
Okay, yeah. Anything else, I'll entertain a motion. Anybody?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make the motion to add the signage and for approval.
Jess?
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman?
Yes.
Ms. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sudoti?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice to have the landlord here, too. To agre-, to agree to, you know, the signage and stuff like that.
That's why I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Conditional use permit to allow outside dining and/or drinking at 8351 Tyler Road by Taco Bell. You fell into the outdoor dining and drinking category, although I know it's not drinking per se, so-
Correct.
But that, that's the way the ordinance is, so that's the way it's presented, so-
Right.
Identify yourself for the clerk, please.
My name's Brian Hall, I'm, uh, representing GPD group tonight.
And give us a little insight as to what you'd like to do there.
Uh, this is going to be a Taco Bell, um, it is part of the, uh, Giant Eagle Shopping Center. That's proposed at the corner of Tyler and Center Street. Uh, this would be the first parcel as you enter into the, uh, the shopping center. Our access is from the interior of the shopping center. For this Taco Bell, this will have a patio, and it would, this, this Taco Bell will not be serving alcoholic beverages. It was just, um, it will have seats, it will have tables and benches. And part of the bench system, there's a rear rail that will be anchored, and it'll create a railing perimeter around that, so that pedestrians, patrons will not enter into the drive-through lane.
Gotcha. Okay, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Spence, comments from the administration?
Yeah, on the, uh, conditions for the outdoor patio, uh, condition three, we put that they install some, uh, bollards there. You have spaces that back out, and occasionally you get people that mess up and don't hit the brake and hit the gas, so if they could put a couple bollards on that side to prevent impact into the, uh, the-
Do we know what those are going to look like?
Uh, not at this point, I mean, it's when they come back for final, I think we could get a detail of it.
Okay. Just, just wanted to ask the question.
Mr. Chairman?
Wait.
Oh, okay.
We'll close the public portion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go, no, go ahead.
I didn't realize it was still open.
Okay.
Uh, I would suggest that we put the bollards at both corners of the area in case someone making that turn from the drive-through lane, uh, makes it too tight and clips the fence or the, so I would, I would protect the, that entire, both corners of that patio with bollards, not just from someone backing up, but someone making the turn in there.
Can you see the paper?
Are you talking here? Right. Or here?
Both.
Okay.
Both locations.
All right, and then, and then also, from my understanding, the, the staff would like more bollards on that side, too, so-
It just basically keeps
Yeah.
adjacent traffic from losing control and-
That's fine.
Going through the fence.
We agree to that. We already have bollards along the drive-through lane anyway, so just add a few more.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Simperman?
Will this be fenced in patio?
It will be fenced on, uh, on two and a half sides. There's a pede-, there's an access point to the front door through sidewalks, so it will be on two full sides that border the drive-through lane, and then the parking lot side would be halfway up to allow for ADA access, free mobility without the use of gates.
Okay, and, and why are you against using a gate?
It's just a maintenance issue. That, that's what it becomes, is a maintenance issue for the, uh-
Well, I'm, I'm thinking as a mother to have my children secure in an area and not run out into the drive-through lane where cars are going to be going back and forth. That's what I was thinking of. If you're agree, I mean, that, that's mine, I-
I understand your concern, I, I just want to discuss this, I'm, I'm not totally against it, but-
Right.
It is a seating area. The drive-through lanes are low speed, low volume, and they are making a turn, so they do have to slow down to make that turn. There will actually be a crosswalk across that area, too, for the ADA spaces. So that does draw attention to the drivers as they come around, there will be a crosswalk that draws attention to tell them to slow down.
Okay, well, that's, that's actually our next conditional use permit, and, and in that one, we're talking about moving those spaces, so there may not be a sidewalk there.
Well, you-
Or a crosswalk.
The, and then, yeah, that condition will just be shifting them up one or two spaces, so the, the crosswalk would still be in that general relocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any, anyone else? Mr. Spence, any additional comments?
No.
Okay, we've got three conditions for the outdoor patio.
Motion to approve with three conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman?
Yes.
Ms. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sudoti?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. Okay, now we'll talk about the drive-through.
Yes, drive-through. I'll skip the whole testimony part and, uh, description, same site. We'll just be doing the drive-through window for this. It will include a dri-, a menu board, a clearance bar, uh, the, uh, order point will, will have a canopy over it, and, um, bollards along the drive-through.
Okay.
It will, oh, I'm sorry, also, it will include a bypass lane, too.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. Mr. Spence, now, comments from the administration?
We just had one condition on the hours of operation.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for the applicant or the administration?
Motion to approve with one condition.
Mrs. Simperman?
I did have, and I don't know if it's part of the site plan or if it's part of the drive-through, but if you could just answer the question, where is the handicap parking going to be relocated to?
Right now, the handicap parking spaces are between here and the, the staff asked for them to be between this entrance and this entrance, so we'll just shift them up so that, for the most part, the, the crosswalk would line up with
this portion of the site. So, well, the, the patrons would come out of this, this entrance here and walk straight across, or they would walk down and over.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, go ahead.
I don't know if I want to. Motion to approve with, uh, one condition.
Second.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Simperman?
Yes.
Ms. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sudoti?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. We'll get to the site plan later on in the agenda.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Spence, are you the, uh-
I'm the app-
You're the applicant here? Code amendments to Chapter 1173 by the city of Menor. Go ahead, Mr. Spence.
Yeah, the administration is proposing this code amendment. We don't have any standards when we do bollards for patios and so forth, and doing a little research, the Texas A&amp;M Traffic Safety Institute and the storefront safety council conducted some research, and the research indicated that there's more than 60 vehicle into building crashes occur each day. There's over, there's more than 10 serious injuries a day and over 3,650 a year. More than one fatality occurs each day, or 485 to about 500 a year. And elderly drivers account for nearly one-half of all the storefront crashes. And it most often involves pedal wear, where you, you think you're hitting the brake, but it's the gas. So, the American Society for Testing and Materials teamed up with researchers from Texas A&amp;M, and they came up and approved a test standard for bollards and barriers, and that was done in November of, uh, 2014. And what they did was they established standards for 10 mile an hour, 20 mile an hour, and 30 mile an hour, uh, crashes. And basically, what, what you get is a three-foot-high vertical bollard with a two-foot footer that's, uh, got, got steel in it, and it, uh, they're designed to stop the one foot of penetration as part of the crash, so I looked online, and several communities have adopted ordinances, and we looked and we took one of those ordinances and modified it, and, uh, the administration would recommend approval of that.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public portion. I have a question. Those are all, I would call casual attempts to, uh, stop the car and, and-
Low-speed crashes.
Low-speed crashes. What about the ATM crashes and the gun store crashes that people seem to be having lately?
Well, I think if you-
Is there any, did they give you any information in those crash tests to accommodate that type of activity?
Well, 30 mile an hour, that's-
I'm just-
It's going to stop penetration
Right.
up to a foot. If you hit a-
I'm thinking about the, the rash of, uh, of ATM crashes where they're trying to take an ATM out of a store location, or they're trying to penetrate a gun store, that type of thing.
Guess it depends on how fast you're going.
I guess it does, so, I'm just curious to see, does that, does that, will that help to, to solve this problem?
Well, I, I think the low-speed crashes are what, we, we don't have any standards right now for when we do these patios. We don't know what people are putting up, and one of the standards is that they would have to meet this American Society for Testing and Materials standard, F3016-214. That, that bollard would have to meet that test standard.
Right, I understand.
So, I, I think if you're getting more than 30 miles an hour, uh, I don't know how you stop, I mean, there are ways to, I mean, the State Department does stuff over, you know, where they've got trucks and they're trying to, you know, blow the place up or something, but I, I don't think we're looking at that in our city.
I just want to bring attention to those types of activities that we know occur almost on a weekly basis in, in northeastern Ohio, so. And commissioners, any comments, any questions for the administration or the, well, they are the applicant, so any comments or questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Valeri?
I like it, I like the fact that you, um, talked about color and that, and the, the yellow, orange, red not being, uh, allowed. I also appreciate you talking about the, the decorative bollards, which will help with people with maintenance. The only comment that I did have is, um, approved by the commission and/or planning administration, which would potentially mean that this can go straight to the administration and bypass planning?
If applicable.
I, I would like to strike that and still have planning to be involved in that, rather than it bypassing us.
Well, what, I guess my, my comment on that is, one, if somebody's installing a couple bollards, everybody's got to come to the planning commission?
That, that's different than if we're looking at coming up with a standard for patios, so-
Well, I, I'm, well, patios, uh, those that come to you anyway. The CUP, so-
Good, good point.
I'm just thinking some instances where a, a business may install a couple, that it doesn't need to come to the commission.
I would agree.
If it meets the color and the planning administrator feels that it, it's decorative, and that it, you know, it's meeting the intent of the code.
I did not think of it that way, and thank you for pointing that out. I like it.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Uh, I'm interested in the fact that the, the testing only requires the foundations to be 24 inches deep. In our climate, here typically poles, any kind of foundation would go down 42 inches, that below the frost line or to the frost line. I don't know how that affects the nature of the test, but I would think with something like this, that we, that would want to be that sturdy, that we'd want to take it to the frost line. You know, I, I, I don't know how, again, I don't know how that affects the nature of the test, but
Yeah, I've not-
from a construction point of view, I would think you'd, you'd want to go down to the frost line with this pipe in order to maintain the, the structural integrity of the foundation of it. So I would make the recommendation to go down 42 inches. It's certainly going to make it stronger, but that, my concern is just that it doesn't get wobbly or get thrust it up, you know, from frost heave, and that you go down 42 inches.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Simperman?
So I'm having a problem with barrier. So, by definition, it says means an object, natural or man, actually, it says mad-made, but I think you meant man-made, other than a bollard, which is used to obstruct the passage of motor vehicles and separate pedestrian vehicular traffic. So, going by that definition, um, to me, that leaves a wide, um, a lot of creativity on the behalf of an applicant. Are barriers something that the planning commission is going to see?
Well, just an example target.
Right.
You've got those big red concrete balls.
That was my next question.
And they are mounted into the concrete, and they are not out of, they set so far back off Menor Avenue, and the size of that building, those red balls are, I think, aesthetically pleasing. I, I mean, the scale of them is in scale with the building, so you, you could see something other than a bollard.
Right.
I, I mean, there's other things that-
Right, but is that something that the planning commission would be looking at?
Yeah, you could be reviewing the, the appearance of it. Yeah, you could be reviewing the, the appearance of it.
Okay. And then that, that, you actually brought up my next question when you said, you know, yellow, orange, or red vehicle impact protection devices shall not be allowed, and yet you just gave us an example of a red one.
Well, I'm saying, well, those match the color of the building.
Okay, but it's in the ordinance, you might want to revisit that part.
I'm talking your typical concrete bollard, yellow, red, I, I'm not worried about that, Katie.
Well, I understand you're not worried about it, I just wanted to make sure that we have an ordinance that makes sense, so if it says bollard or barrier, and we have.
I'm not too worried about that.
Okay.
Okay. Any comment back on Mr. Varga's comment about going down 42 inches?
I guess we'd have to check with the, some of these bollard companies and see if, in fact, in this climate, does it need to be further? I, I mean, it's.
And it certainly wouldn't, I don't think it would compromise the test data, you know, the standard.
Well, you got a, a three-foot, right now, they're five-foot with the two-foot footer and three-foot of posts sticking above. I would have to check with the, the various manufacturers.
You, you agree, though, you plant something in this, this climate.
Right.
You wanna go down to the frost.
You're not getting frost down in Texas A&amp;M.
I know.
Hopefully. So, do you want us to move forward with this, then, or you wanna test that?
Yeah, I can, I can check that out when it goes to council.
And then, should it require 42 inches, you'll come back to us, it's?
Well, you guys can put a recommendation that, what Mr. Varga said about the footers.
Yeah, make a recommendation that.
Then when it goes to council.
42 inches. Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One comment related to this. If, if we do find that going down the foundation to 42 inches would augment the stopping power, let's say, would there be any consideration that maybe, for the barriers, for example, that they could be slightly shorter? It seems like they, they grew a bit, which I assume that's part of the stopping power in height, but let's say, when we usually want to recommend a decorative plant or something like that, if it's already set at a certain distance, and then we put planting on top of that, we might be starting to get a little too high, maybe with the additional footer depth that there could be a compromise in there, and it may be already in the study somewhere, so that might be something to think about.
Well, I think if you keep it under three feet, you're good.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion with Mr. Varga's recommendation.
So moved.
Anybody at all?
So moved. Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sudoti?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. Good job, Mr. Spence.
Thank you.
Under old business, rezoning of 15.56 acres from R4, single-family to RVG at 7910 King Memorial, is that applicant's here, so I entertain a motion to take it off the table.
Motion to remove from the table?
Second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sudoti?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. Go right ahead.
Do I need to announce who I am again? I don't remember. For the record.
For the.
Greg Summers, Summers Real Estate Group.
There you go. Actually know who you are.
Been here a few times.
I know.
It's regarding the, the woodlands of Menor Community and King Memorial. Since our last meeting, we've addressed the commission's concerns regarding utility availability. All applicable utilities have been confirmed, and those letters have been submitted to the administration, also the trip generation study regarding traffic, and they also did verify that water pressure that was discussed at the one meeting by one of the residents about water pressure, and it was, it was sufficient, and they documented that in the letter. Also, since the last meeting, we've met with the HOA of Hidden Glen to collaboratively address the drainage concerns that they've been having, and we are gonna continue to do that and assist in any way we can. And we've also, again, we've met with the administration to work through any other concerns, and the other item regarding the century home. Since the last meeting, we had a professional inspection of the property. It has been determined that the property is in very poor condition. It's, it would not be financeable, it's, it's beyond practical repair. It, it should be demolished, and that, that's what we've determined. I, I do a, a few pictures that I can.
Well, we, we've got the report.
Okay, I have a few additional, I didn't know if you wanted to see them, but.
I mean, if, if they're, if they're the ones that are outside the report.
They're, they're in line, it's just.
Okay.
It, it's, it's in very poor condition. I mean, water intrusion, mold.
You don't have an extra $400,000 that you could, you know, I'm kidding.
I mean, I, if, if it was, if it was doable, I, you know.
I know.
Problem is, there's no way that a bank would finance it either, so if somebody were to try to buy it, it, it wouldn't be financeable, and I think that they end up in the same circumstance with the previous resident, they took, took it on, and it was way, way beyond what was.
So, Mr. Spence, let me interrupt you here. Do, do we need to be concerned with that at this point? Can we move it along to council with?
Yeah, that's what I thought, we'd just put a, the disposition of the existing home at 7910.
That's fine.
Be reviewed by city council.
Okay, since they're the ones that brought it up to begin with, about trying to save the house and.
Right.
Having the inspector.
That's completely fine, I just wanted to point out that, you know, we addressed it, and it turned in the report as requested.
Okay.
So, we're finding out.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Semperman?
Greg, in your letter from Aqua, it says if you'd like to schedule a fire flow test, to contact them, have you done that, or are you planning on doing it?
I need to ask my, the fire flow test for Aqua?
I believe a fire flow test is for a fire line. What we did was, we had Aqua conduct what's called a static pressure test, and they come out and they test the water pressure, and we were at 44 PSI, the requirement, minimum requirement is 35, so we're well above it.
I need you to identify yourself for.
Sorry, Richard Summers with Summers Real Estate Group.
Right.
Okay.
But that, you know, that, that's.
And last question, have you shared this inspection report with Councilman Blake?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anything else? Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with three conditions.
Second.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Sudoti?
Yes.
That's okay.
Sorry, thanks.
Miscellaneous review of a modification of development plan at 7255 Center Street.
Motion to remove from the table?
Second.
Entertain a motion, we've got it, so call the roll, please.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Semperman?
Yes.
Ms. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sudoti?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. Here we are.
Back again.
Back again.
Michael Gatto, Silverado Arms, 7255 Center Street.
So, we, we've seen your submittal. Mr. Spence, any comments on the, regarding the submittal?
Well, I think the, the, the size of the blocks are out of scale with the, the shopping center.
So, is there anything that can be done with the, the size of the blocks and beautification of the blocks?
I, I don't know.
No. I mean, it's a simple answer, I mean, the blocks are two-by-two-by-six, you can get them two-by-two-by-four, but that's, I think the, the scale is the height. I mean, we've decorated them, we've put flowers in, on top of them, I, I don't know what else that can be done.
And, and if you go much lower, is it gonna?
Go much lower, you're not gonna be able to stop.
It's not gonna prevent anything.
It's not gonna prevent anything.
Okay. Commissioners, questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I have a, a comment, I guess, my comment would be that, that submission, I think the submission is a fair assessment to try to fix this problem. You know, I drove by there the other day, and, and with all the cars that were in the parking lot at the time in front of the building, I was very hard-pressed to see the, the actual blocks, even though, you know, we, we see them as being large, and I think they might be large in the, in the scale of the sidewalk, but if, if planted and constructed the way that he has shown, and if you were to choose the right type of vegetation that would fall, I think that could disguise even the height a little bit, so to me, I think it's a good, good solution.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I appreciate the effort that's going into this, that you're trying to resolve this. Maybe I just have a question, you're attaching these vertical boards directly to the concrete?
No, we're gonna put a two-by-four perimeter, we're gonna nail it two-by-four.
Okay, nail it to the two-by-four, right.
Right.
I guess my concern here is that, is that there's, you're, you're just exposing this wood to soil and moisture, and drainage would go down between the boards and the concrete, and I'm, I'm just afraid this would not hold up over time, that it would deteriorate quickly.
It's gonna be wall-minized picket fence, so it's just like any other fence that's out there, should last 20 years, wall-minized fence.
And, and if it doesn't, you'll fix it?
Yeah, and, you know, I was planning on lining the inside with plastic.
Well, okay, that.
A visque wing, so it doesn't seep down through, and then we're gonna put flower planters in there filled with mulch.
Okay, so there's a little more to it than what's described here?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause my biggest concern was that it would deteriorate pretty quickly.
Yeah, it, it's gonna be wall-minized wood, and it'll be just like a standard.
And if, if it does deteriorate, then you fix it, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I own the shopping center also, so, you know, I, I wanna keep it looking good.
Anything else?
What would be the timeframe?
How could you?
Timeframe for what?
For doing what you've proposed to do.
I got the contractor ready to go, so, I mean, if I get approval tonight, I'll call him on my way home and tell him, you know, get the wood, let's get started, so I would suspect a week or so.
You look like you had a comment.
No, I, I'm glad you're getting more specific about the timeframe, but I'm just wondering, in terms of the purposes to be planters, if there's any recommendations relative to the planting material, I'm, I'm gonna go on a limb here and say two geraniums in, in a box probably isn't what you're, what you're contemplating, so, and then there was a suggestion made about, you know, perhaps there's some, I'm assuming vines or some type of.
Well, I think Mr. Perkovic talked about something cascading down, right?
Correct, but again, it's kind of hard to know that the applicant's in compliance if, well, I mean, just by virtue of constructing these, if it's approved, the applicant would be in compliance, the specific nature of the plant material, it, it would have to be an additional component of that, of that approval.
Okay.
I, I was personally thinking more greenery, so it's green year-round, you know, boxwood type of stuff, some cascading type of vine, you know, type of stuff. I wasn't thinking just, you know, marigolds or, or something like that, that die off. I was thinking something more green that's gonna last and, and look good all winter long, boxwoods, which are pretty expensive. You know, that's where I was thinking, I would be happy to put boxwoods and some vine type of greenery coming out of it.
Okay. You wanna see that in there, is there?
Yes, obviously, we have a landscape architect on staff, and maybe I can work with the applicant a little bit relative to vines that may, may be all right in this type of application.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Semperman?
How much room is there, just remind me, how much room is there between the barriers and, for the sidewalk, for?
It's a seven-foot sidewalk and a two-foot barrier.
Okay, so it's fine.
But there is a little bump out between the two doors, that's about eight inches, so there's a, a little area there that's gonna be about eight inches less than the, than the, than the five feet.
But it will be at least three feet?
Oh, absolutely. The, the building department already approved that.
Okay, and then my second question would be, how about the bollards that are in the back of the store, can we, or the, the barriers, can we remove those?
Those are a big safety feature, too, there's been attempted break-ins on back of buildings lately.
Well, I understand that, but you can't get the speed in the back of the building, so I, I don't see where that's.
Sure.
Thank you.
I don't see how that's gonna make a big difference, I don't think it's unsightly, but yes, I guess, if that's what you want.
Who, who parks back there? Employees, employees at the center, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they already tried breaking into the back of that building about 10 years ago, they actually rammed a car in and got through the masonry wall. Literally, I, I'll show anyone the area where they did it, right behind the dumpster, they moved the dumpster.
I, I believe it's appropriate to have those.
In the back of the building.
In the back of the.
I, I agree, and they're not visible.
Mrs. Semperman, do you wanna see them out of there, is that what you're suggesting?
I'm not making any motions.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Valeri?
I'd like to also throw a condition that everything will be done and completed within the next 30 days, your growing season's gonna be gone, so if you try to plant something, you're gonna struggle, you're gonna throw boxwoods in there, you're gonna add another two feet of height to it, you're gonna wanna get everything planted and taken before the winter hits.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Val, Mr. Varga?
You, you, you're dragging me into, into this, I, I'm not, I'm not feeling real strong about it, but I would wanna make a condition then, based on our previous conversation, that this will have a liner in it of some type, I mean.
On the top.
So that the water and the plant materials and the soil can't go down and don't come in contact with the wood.
Correct.
Directly.
You wanna make that a condition?
I wanna make that a condition.
So, we've got that as a condition, we've got the plant material as a condition, right? We've got the condition as it was submitted this evening.
And I'd really like to see them in the back of the building, because it, it really is important.
Well, I, I personally think that they need to stay there, only because of the nature of your business. I'll entertain a motion if there's no other questions.
Motion to approve with two conditions.
Could we clarify the landscaping?
What do you?
The condition that you guys want?
Oh, you want me to clarify that?
That you'll meet with the landscaper, or are there certain plants you want to?
Well, we, we said boxwood, we said something that will be forever green, correct?
Right.
So, that's, that's.
That's the boxwood.
Would it be forever, evergreen?
And then some vine-crawling.
And then, Mr. , Mr., you suggested, Mr. Zeman suggested that you meet with the landscape architect, or the landscape architect could provide some guidance here, I think, right?
Potentially, again, I, I, it's probably outside of anyone's expertise here to suggest what types of vines would, would do good in this application, I just wanted to mention we do have a landscape architect on staff, so.
So, forever green and meet with the suggestion of the landscape architect?
Got it.
Anything else?
Are there two conditions or three conditions, because I thought there was a growing season?
Well, Mr. Valeri's comment about 30 days. Got that one, right?
No, I'm sorry, the motion to approve with three conditions.[1658.02]
Is there a second?
I'll second.
When you're ready.
Mr. Valeri?
No.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Zimmerman?
No.
Ms. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sudoti?
No.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Four to three.
Four to three, passes four to three.
Thank you.
Thanks for your-
Appreciate it.
Mr. Lane's review of outdoor storage propane tanks, I see that applicants here, so. If you'd identify yourself for the clerk, please.
I'm Greg Berger, and this is Glenn Berkey with Berger's Ace Hardware.
And we're here to talk about the shielding of the propane.
That is correct, yes, the shielding of the propane along the east side of our building here. We're gonna show a picture here in a second. We've come up with two possible shielding products. This is the propane cylinders along our east side of our building.
That's what's existing there now?
That is correct, yes. And then we're proposing two different types of materials for approval. One is gonna be a vinyl fence that would look something along this line, a solid material. Would go approximately one foot above the top of the cages there. We have that material, and then we also have a board-on-board fence, something very similar to what we have going across the back that we spoke about last time, to go across the back of our building and ties in with the existing fence that is along our property line and the neighborhood houses there.
So basically, we're talking about a vinyl fence that would match the building?
That is correct. It would match the- The parapet wall, that's the-
And that goes a foot higher than the propane-
That is correct. It would go one, actually probably be a little bit higher, the way you buy fence material would be about one foot, another four, four and a half inches higher.
And the board-on-board, same, same situation?
Same situation with that.
Except the board-on-board matches the boards that go across the back of the-
That is correct, yes, it would.
Okay.
So we have two choices that you might find one of them approvable to work with.
Okay. Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
I guess whatever's approved, I'd want it to be consistent.
Okay. Consistent with the fence that goes along the back, or consistent with the color of the building?
Both.
Those are two different colors.
Well-
Well, either use all wood.
Or, or-
Oh, I mean-
That's what's there now, across the back.
That's what's across the back and the dumpsters.
If you wanna be consistent, then that should be what goes along the propane tanks, I would guess. Go ahead.
I just lost Katie. Yeah, you just, no, I-
Well, that's, that's only one vote, so that doesn't-
No, I'd rather see the vinyl on the side. I don't think a vinyl fence looks a lot more decorative than a wooden fence. And the vinyl, as Mr. Berger points out, matches the cornice. So, yeah, I, I definitely wanna see the vinyl on the propane, and I'm, I tend to agree with Mr. Berger in the, in the back. It would, doesn't match the dumpster. I, I kinda, I understand what Mr. Spence is saying, that they should match, but what they're up against is something completely different. I guess if I had a choice, I'd like to see them both be vinyl, just because I think it's a higher-class, nicer product.
That's, that's our thought, too. We like the vinyl going across there, a little easier maintenance than the propane and so forth.
Well, would you be doing, willing to do the vinyl in the back, though? That, that's what Mr. Spence is leaning towards.
Could do a brown vinyl. Could do a brown vinyl, if you wanna tie it in with the fence. I mean, there's existing fence already going across there now, so along the property line.
There's a fence along the property line, and there's your fence, which will come in front of that-
Correct.
To shield the outside storage.
Right. So across there, I would assume that we were gonna do the board-on-board fence to tie in with that. And then going along the side of the building in front of the propane, we thought that the vinyl would look a little classier, ties in with the building that's actually seen.
This is what's in the back now.
Right there, okay.
Now, on the right side of that photo, is that the fence that's on the property line?
Right up in here.
Okay.
As the property line, and then the other gated area is the dumpster area.
So then you would, you would put your, whatever goes back there in front of that fence-
It would go with the front of the gates of-
It would be, it would be tie-in to what's, where the gates are now.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Mrs. Zimmerman?
Would you be willing to change your dumpster enclosure?
Help me out in regards of-
If you're gonna put a brown vinyl, would you be willing to put that as, make your dumpster enclosure brown vinyl, too, so it all matches?
We could, we could.
I think that that would look really nice. And then it would match the fence that you have in the back there.
Now, the fence in the back is a board-on-board, it's not vinyl.
You're not gonna see it, I'm gonna see the-
I just wanted to make sure that-
I know it's at a different elevation, so you will probably see the top of it, but I think you'll, most people will just see your brown vinyl fence.
Okay. And right now, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
More of a clarification, a question. You have a series of bollards there now to protect from a car or something. You're gonna put this fence outside of those bollards and keep the bollards, right?
Yeah, oh, definitely. My preference, unless you guys recommend something else, was to put it on the outside of the bollards to kinda make it look a little nicer.
That's fine. I mean, I just wanted to clarify.
Yellow against the white, it's, to me, it doesn't look as nice.
I didn't want the bollards to go away.
Oh, no, 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 definitely not.
The vinyl fence isn't gonna stop anything.
No, no, that's definitely gonna stay there.
Okay.
Fine.
Any other comments, questions? I guess we're down to Mr. Spence's comments of consistency. Board-on-board or vinyl in vinyl. Does the vinyl in vinyl work for you?
Yes.
I mean, the two colors. Was there, was there a high sign over here?
I'm a puppet.
So brown vinyl across the back and vinyl to match the-
Trim.
Trim? Is that, is that a feasible thing?
Yes. Okay, so if I understand correctly, across the back of the property, we're going to take the enclosure around the dumpster, the board-on-board off, we're gonna replace that with a brown vinyl, and then continue that across the area to hide the display of, of bad goods across there.
Right.
Brown vinyl. And then along the side of the building in front of the propane cylinders, in front of the bollards, will be a white, well, cream, almond color to match the top, I call it, whitest. I'm a guy.
Mrs. Zimmerman, does that work for you?
I, I was gonna say, that was a great motion.
That works for you, then?
That works for me, that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sudoti?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Thank you for working with us.
Thank you, appreciate the effort there.
No more trips to Chicago?
No.
That's good, Mrs. Zimmerman, one woman, one vote. Preliminary site plan of a commercial building at 9490 Diamond Center Drive.
Motion to have removed from the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Yes?
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic?
Yes.
Mr. Sudoti?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. You're back.
I'm back. I'm Brian Hall from GPD Group, representing this application also. It is 94, 9490 Diamond Center Drive. We're here for the preliminary site plan approval. Gone through the CUP process, and through that process, there was a, a lot of back and forth about the lighted intersection at Almer- Emerald Court. And what we came up with, and the landlord is, of the shopping center is agreeable, is that there currently is two drive aisles that access the same road as Emerald Court. And our proposed, is, proposal is to close off the, this drive aisle and route all the traffic to the northern side?
Southern.
Southern side, sorry, it is backwards. Southern side, and then have them come down, so we have more queuing length. The Taco Bell is our prototypical design. It does have the drive-through lane. There is no patio on this one. We do have a separate right-in and a separate right-out access, which will be utilized by both Taco Bell and the shopping center. We are providing the adequate number of spaces. Two parking spaces are in the shopping center side, which is on another lot. And we will get any easements that are necessary for that. The landlord is amenable to that. The drainage, there will be onsite capturing of the stormwater runoff. There is already existing stormwater on this parcel, so we'll just be tying into that, which is all part of a regional basin north of us, closer to the highway. And there are already easements activated, and we'll just make sure they, they are modified to, to address our proposed design and lot that we're proposing. Utilities will be provided with water and sewer from Diamond Center Drive. Site lighting will be LED lights. Poles will be 25-foot high. There will be a trash enclosure in the southwestern corner. And we will have wall signs on this, on the building. There is a corner tower on this building, on the drive-through side, at, at the front drive-through side, which will have signage on both sides of the corner, and then an additional sign over the main entrance on the parking lot side. And we are also proposing a monument sign, 10 feet high, 40 foot square, 40 square feet, which is allowable by code.
Mr. Spence, any comments?
Yeah, the city engineer had one comment, and it's relative to, let me go up here. And I just wanna make sure this gets addressed, but if you got traffic coming down through here, the city engineer wants this island widened here, and this, this island that's proposed shifted over further here, so when people come down through here and make this motion, that they, they're behind the crossbar, so that traffic comes in like this instead of right at it. So he wants this shifted over into here, this brought out, so that this comes like this.
Okay.
I guess when it comes in for final site plan, we'd like to see that.
That's agreeable with you? We don't know if it's agreeable with the landlord yet, no. But I'm sure-
Correct.
If it's agreeable with you, it'll be agreeable with them.
We'll work with the professionals to make sure everybody's satisfied. I really don't see any reason why it wouldn't be an agreeable. It definitely adds to the safety of the site.
Right.
I don't, I don't, I don't foresee any issues.
Okay.
But, yeah, we will definitely work with the landlord and the professionals to make sure everybody is in agreement, comes to a satisfactory conclusion.
Okay, commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Valeri?
In regards to the parking lot, you've got 16 spots in a row. We'll have to put a landscape island in there, correct, Mr. Spence?
Technically, yes. No more than 15 are permitted in a continuous row.
And what was the parking count right now?
They're way over.
Oh, okay.
I mean, the shopping center's way over. They'd have to get a shared parking agreement for two or three parking spaces, and then we'll need cross-access easements.
Easy enough. So then can you put a island in along that right-hand side?
Yeah, yes, we can, uh, we'll either put an island, or we'll eliminate one parking space. The, the reason, I, I have to look at the truck routing through the site. It shouldn't be an issue. We should be able to put a centrally located island, because the, the delivery truck will come through this way. So, yeah. Either way, we'll, we'll conform with the, the row of parking requirement in, in the town. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Sudoti?
On your cross-easements, do you anticipate one with men or group? Cross-access easement?
Mr. Chairman, those, those I think are already in place.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that, that would, that, this development would not affect those.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Zimmerman?
I have a couple of things. First of all, when I was out there, this aerial drawing that we have, actually, you can see the parking spaces a little bit better than you can when you're actually out there. So I would like to make a condition that the shopping center parking lot needs to be restripped. It's hard to see where anybody's gonna go, and especially when you get down to that eastern end, you know, where you're gonna move the, put in some additional islands, and you're gonna be redirecting traffic. When I was out there, I couldn't see if there was even a drive aisle there, because I couldn't tell where the parking spaces were. So it was really hard to find parking spaces.
So you'll discuss that with the landlord?
Yeah, I will have to, yes.
Because you can't make that commitment.
I cannot.
It is a maintenance issue. I mean-
I know.
The landlord could be informed of that fact, and that tends to move the needle a little bit.
Otherwise, wouldn't it just be a code enforcement item?
It can be both, is my point. Yeah, so we shouldn't have to get to that, to that level, though, but it can.
So maybe if you could push that along to the landlord, that'd be great.
Yeah, tell him, tell him that the issue was raised here this evening.
Yes, I will raise that to our, make that to our attention.
And my main reason for actually even being out there was to see if there was another access, and if it was clearly defined, so-
By the lawyers.
Since I, I couldn't find it, that would be the street.
Okay.
And then, condition number six, it talks about the details of the fence surrounding the trash enclosure. And the trash enclosure that's out there is masonry right now, so, and it looked like the actual enclosure itself was fine, it was the gates.
The, the problem with that enclosure right now is too small for Taco Bell's requirements.
Okay.
We have two dumpsters, and, and a grease interceptor, not grease interceptor, but a grease dumpster also, that needs to fit in that enclosure, so that one is too small.
So you will be making a new dumpster?
Yes.
Okay, so-
Unfortunately, yeah, I agree, though, it is in good shape, but it is just too small for our use.
Okay, so you'll give us details on-
Yes, they will be provided.
And, okay. I mean, then-
Mr. Spence, did you have a-
Yeah, I would request that it be a masonry enclosure to match the building.
I have no issue with that.
And match the building, okay.
It's like, it's like a trade-off. It's masonry for masonry, you know?
Well, speaking of-
We'll match, we'll, we'll match the building. I was gonna say we'll match existing, but I can do that.
And spring-loaded doors on the-
They will be self-closing.
Okay.
Rust-proof, self-closing.
Thank you, Mr. Spence. Mrs. Zimmerman?
Speaking of matching masonry, what color is the building being proposed?
The building is a brick color. I know the elevations that we provided you had a gray and beige hues to them. I don't know why that came out like that, to be honest. They are brick color.
It's a bad Xerox machine. I forget those all, I'm sorry. It's a bad copy machine.
I'll blame, blame my computer.
Color, brick.
It is a brick. It will be whitewash-colored brick, so it'll have like an antique-y look to it, rustic, more brick look to it.
I would like to see samples of it.
We will provide samples at time of final.
And if you could give us a, a rendering or a photographic rendering with the existing building? Because the existing building's brick.
Yes.
A dark brown brick.
Yes. It is, the, the brick is a red brick with a whitewash on top of it. And when I say whitewash, it's not a, it is not painted white. The, the red does show through, it just has a, it, it takes away from the deep red color.
I guess the actual sample would-
Yes, it would definitely help out. So, yeah, we'll provide all that for the final, final submission.
Okay, great, thank you. And there's limited ethos, correct?
Yes. The only ethos that we, we are proposing is behind the slatted wall. That's above the front entrance and wraps around to the parking lot side, and that is only because we paint that purple. Yeah, the, the, behind the slatted wall is painted purple. The slot wall stands off from the ethos wall, and there's LED strip lights that face the purple wall, so you get a glow that comes through, a purple glow between the slats of the, of that slatted area. Trying to-
Okay.
See if there's one in this area that I could point you to. I don't know.
I don't think there is.
No, I don't think there is. But I can, I can provide renderings of that during final also. It, it, it actually looks pretty good. It, it's just a nice glow that comes through. There's no obtrusive glare, there's no, nothing that would draw the attention of any drivers.
If you could give us a picture of one lit at night? That would be one.
Yes.
Thank you. So, if there's aren't any questions?
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion with, I have nine conditions. Condition number six is gonna be as-
Wait, we got one comment.
Yeah, no, I still have some comments.
Oh, sorry.
What's the size of this property? How big is it?
It's, uh, just over half an acre.
How big is the previous project we looked at? How big is that property?
Point seven acres.
Just two, two-tenths of an acre bigger?
Yes.
How does the service drive resolve itself for the, the whole, the whole shopping center? It's gonna have delivery trucks and stuff back there. Even in your photograph, there's, it looks like a large vehicle back there. How, how does that vehicle get out of there?
The, it is a one-way road behind, and it does come around, and they can maneuver through the site.
So they have to go all the way back through your parking lot? They can't go out the two exits, because they're not wide enough to make turns for delivery trucks? And they have to go all the way back through the parking lot? And then make the S-turn to get into the other driveway, and then make another 90-degree turn to get into the out, outdr-? And then make the S-turn to get into the other driveway, and then make another 90-degree turn to get into the out, out drive? Has the fire department reviewed this relative to their vehicles, being able to get through this site?
Yep.
Okay. Where do you think most of your customers come from to this location?
Most of our customers will come from Helsley, Heasley.
Yeah, yeah, Heasley. Maybe 90%, 95%, because there's only an apartment complex at the other end. Don't you think there's going to be a very strong urge by the majority, large majority of your customers, to, to make a left-hand turn out of that right turn only? How do you... Everyone's trying to go the other way, and you're telling them, no, you have to weave your way through this parking lot, make a number of turns, no signage, they just have to head...
Oh, no, there is signage. I'm sorry, there is signage in the drive-through lane.
No, I understand, but then they drive into this parking lot, and at the very other end of this shopping center is, they have to do the squirrel around the new island, and then find the traffic light, and then figure out where they're going. Do you do this anywhere else, this kind of convoluted circulation path?
Honestly, it happens in, in shopping centers more often than you think. When you have the access roads, people, they will find their way out. Taco Bell is a destination where people know where they're going, and after a few visits, they will know where and how to go.
Well, the other issue is that you've eliminated one of the entrances to the shopping center that used to be at that end.
Well, there's still the entrance to the shopping center.
Well, people aren't going to drive through the parking lot at Taco Bell to get into the shopping center, do you think?
Mr. Spence, has this already been discussed at council and approved?
Not just the drive-through was approved.
Well...
Well, they approved the circulation pattern for the drive-through and for the shopping center.
All right. I just, I'm, my gut feeling is that this isn't going to work. This is going to be ultimately unsafe at some point. Either people trying to get back onto the road, turning the wrong way, or just meandering through the parking lot.
Mr. Sedoti.
Thank you. Excuse my voice, I don't know why. My concern is, is that you're talking about Heasley-bound, Heasley Road-bound traffic would be directed to the southerly parking aisle in front of the storefronts. So if I understand you correctly, we're going to direct the majority of people, minus any kind of study, I think it's beyond dispute that the majority of these cars are going to want to go back to Heasley to either access Route Two or go southbound on Heasley into Mennor. So we're going to have these cars going in front of the storefronts, which is going to bring more interaction with customers going in and out of those storefronts, and we're running cars down that southerly aisle. Once they, Taco Bell's going to bring a healthy amount of traffic to this already crowded plaza. Once they lease the store, the retail unit between Pizzeria and Cleveland Candle, that's going to be another retail unit begging for people to come in and go to their, their store. And once the, the owners of this property lease the westernmost end of the Brown Derby, you know, where Nusa's not going to be occupying, it's going to bring more cars into this area. And we're going to be requiring these cars, both on the southerly aisle in front of all the storefronts, to Emerald Court, to that light, to make, to make a left-hand turn to go west. Now, I went out there this week, and it wasn't as crowded as it could be. But every time I got on Emerald Court to go to that light, the green light, which gave me the ability to exit, maybe 10 seconds, 10, 15 seconds. The red light that stopped me there and allowed the east-west progression of cars on Diamond Center, a minute and a half, 50 seconds, you know what I'm saying? That light's not timed, and you're going to have a problem.
This was discussed with, at the city commission, and adjusting that timing is an option. And our traffic engineer, our traffic engineer did make a recommendation to the city's traffic engineer that timing analysis should be performed on that signal. Because the, you're correct, the, the timing leaving the shopping center, this shopping center, is very short.
Very short.
And it should be, should be lengthened.
Well, you know, that's my concern, and what worries me is, you know, I don't want to create an untenable situation there. When it's all done, it's up and running, all you're hearing people saying, boy, this is ridiculous. Who approved this? That, that bothers me, all that traffic in that parking lot, pushing them east to go west. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anything else administratively, Mr. Spence?
Nope.
Okay. Commissioners, anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with nine conditions. Condition number six reads, details of the masonry trash enclosure shall be provided and match the building. I have condition number eight being that the shopping center parking lot needs to be restripped, and the applicant will contact the property owner. And then my ninth condition is regarding the parking spaces, and that there should be no more than 15 spaces between landscape islands.
Is there a second?
Second.
Just when you're ready.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
No.
Mrs. Zimmerman.
I'm going to vote yes because of the city council's recommendations.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
No.
Mr. Sedoti.
No.
Mr. Snow.
Uh, no. What's the score?
No.
Three to four against. Finding a fact?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Mr. Varga.
I, I just find the convoluted circulation path to be unsafe. I feel that the site is too small for everything that's trying to be done. And I don't want to be responsible for negative consequences that may take place.
Mr. Perkovic.
I also find the, the parking lots' traffic patterns a little convoluted, as well as I feel that the new Taco Bell building is too close proximity to be in a good relationship with the neighboring building.
Mr. Sedoti.
I basically stated why I was against it just a few minutes ago. I'm worried we're going to be creating an untenable situation there with the parking situation, and requiring everybody to move east in order to go west, and running all those cars on the southerly parking lot in front of those entrances, that bothered me.
Mr. Snow.
I, I think that the original votes back in July were because of the easements that was needed to flow that 45 car. I think you told us it would be 45 cars an hour that would be floating by the front of that shopping center. I think that's an untenable amount of traffic to force through that shopping center, so that's the reason for my no vote.
Just, just for the record, we did have a traffic study done, and the traffic engineer and your city engineer agreed with our findings that there is significant amount, that the traffic is available on this roads. And our site would not be influ, would not influence the existing conditions of Diamond Center, Heasley, Emerald Road. Our traffic engineer and your city engineer also agreed that this path through the shopping center is the path of most shopping centers, and, I'm sorry, let me restate that. The, our traffic engineer and your city traffic engineer has agreed that this layout is a good layout. The, the, I'll, I'll use your words, the convoluted path is not so convoluted. The, there is one way out. The vehicles will travel through that parking lot and find their way out. The vehicles leaving Taco Bell will most likely travel the northern drive aisle, go to the end, turn south to the southern drive aisle, and then turn around to Emerald.
Okay. I mean, we, we could reconsider the vote. It needs to be, one of the negative votes needs to act as the reconsideration. Is that correct?
Correct.
Anybody that voted no want to reconsider? Hearing none, I guess not. Preliminary site plan of a commercial building, 8351 Tyler. I think you're back. Don't sit, don't sit down.
Yes, okay. Brian Hall from GPD Group, sorry. The, uh, I have a site plan here, Rick. Again, this, this is the site with the Giant Eagle Shopping Center on Tyler Boulevard, near the intersection of Center Street. Oops, sorry. This is going to be a 2,0053 square foot Taco Bell with drive-through and patio. The site is accessed through the internal shopping center configuration. Majority of the patrons, we are anticipating to come through the right-in, right-out. Well, I can't even say that, because there's, there would be a lighted intersection on the other, other end of the shopping center, so. The site is proposing 24 parking spaces. Since this is part of an overall shopping center, only 10 are required. Taco Bell prefers between 18 to 30 spaces, so we provided 24 to be within Taco Bell standards. The drainage will be on-site. There will be some inlets on-site, and they will be piped to the proposed storm system within the shopping center's drainage system. Landscaping will be provided. There is, I do want to acknowledge that there is landscaping along Tyler Boulevard that was part of the approved shopping center. That will include, I believe it was brick piers, evergreens, and deciduous tree mix, and we will work with the professionals to make sure that we are within the standards of that approval. The lighting will be LED fixtures on 25-foot poles. There will be a trash enclosure in the northeastern corner of the shop, of the parking lot. The, right now, we are proposing a picket, a composite picket fence style. There will be signage. There are five signs overall. Unlike the previous application, this actually has two corner towers. One at the front of the building and the drive-through lane, and the one opposite. Thank you, Rick. So there'll be the corner tower in the front and the corner tower on the drive-through side. And then there'll be also a corner tower on the rear catty corner, on the rear side, and then the, the parking lot side. The corner tower is a rusted metal, and the lights will be illuminated, or, I'm sorry, the signs will be illuminated at night. There was also a sign over the side entrance on the parking lot side, above the doors. Unfortunately, it's hard to see on this rendering. We are also proposing a monument sign, 10 feet high, 40 square feet, which is conforming with the code.
Okay, that's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Mr. Spence, any comments?
I'd just make a comment that it says details of the fence around the trash enclo, I, I would suggest it say a masonry trash enclosure with a solid self-closing gate. It's not a big deal.
You're shaking your head yes, so that's okay?
That's fine, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Same comment earlier, number of parking stalls along the east. You're going to have too many there.
Yes.
If there's any way to relocate where your trash enclosure is going to be, you've got that center island as you, you're right to the drive-through. Is there any way to put that in that center section there, which potentially could help with your trash hauler being able to pull in and backing out a little bit easier?
Are you saying in this area here? So you'd pull in here?
Correct. It just, it's preliminary, so just something to, if there's any opportunity to consider that.
Yes, I will take your comment into consideration, and we'll, we'll look at the, the routing of the vehicles.
Perfect. And then the only other comment would be, landscape plan, if there's anything that you'd be able to do along the east down the drive lane, because you're going to have that small island. It's going to be tough to get anything to grow in there, but if there's something that you guys can look at to try to spruce that up and...
I believe that's a five-foot, sorry, there's no dimension. I believe that's a five-foot island, so, yeah, we could easily put some shrubs in that area.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Varga.
You have those two really nice, well, let me ask, ask it this way. Are there landscaping plans for those two large areas to the, I guess, the north end where the drive comes through?
Here.
Both are, yeah. Is there plans to landscape those?
We will add trees. I'm, I'm not sure where you're going, but...
I don't know where...
We will be, we'll be, I mean...
I'm kind of hoping, I'm kind of hoping that there'd be landscaping, some conceptual landscaping at those two large areas.
There, there will be. We will provide, Taco Bell has a very extensive ta, sorry, taco menu of landscaping, and will, we will provide landscaping in that area.
That's what I'd like to see something proposed.
Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Zimmerman.
What colors are we talking about?
Yeah, same colors.
Oh, same.
Yes, it will be brick. It's, again, it's a whitewash brick, so it's, it's a, I was thinking about a description. It'd be a muted red color, so.
Guess?
And we, also, we're working with the developer.
Okay.
We've submitted them to the developer to make sure they meet their requirements.
That's where I'm going.
That's approved with the...
Right. That, that's where I was coming from.
Yeah, and we haven't gotten word whether it's acceptable or not, so by final, again, we'll have the agreed upon.
So it's going to meet with the city market design guidelines?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Sedoti.
Thank you. There's a construction fence out there now, which kind of marks out the Mexican restaurant, and I realize it's temporary. But what are your plans for that eastern property line? Will it be mounded trees? Would it be vinyl fencing? How are you going to separate yourself from the corner parcel?
We weren't, no plans. They are gaining access through...
Did you answer that with Mr. Valeri's comment?
Well, I, I believe Mr. Valeri was talking about right in front of our parking spaces.
That's, yes, that's where I was talking.
So we will be providing landscaping along this area here. The, the lot line actually is over here on the other side of the access aisle, so we will not be providing anything on that side, other than what the developer is proposing.
All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I have...
Mr. Perkovic.
Two questions for the applicant. One would be at the rear of the building. We were talking about the landscape package and the number of parking spaces. I, I think since this development has a lot of internal views toward the back of your new proposed store, if maybe we look at eliminating one of those parking spaces at the northeast corner just to augment the available area that could be utilized for landscaping to maybe soften a little bit there. If you look at the rear elevation, you know, you've got some utilities that are coming in there. That might be a good place to sort of expand that a bit. And then the other comment was that I wanted to ask you about, you had mentioned that you're also proposing, in addition to your tower signage... also proposing, in addition to your tower signage, the 10-foot-high monument sign. Is that a standalone on your parcel, or is that part of the development package that they're going to be providing?
It's proposed to be a standalone on our parcel.
Okay. Can you show us where that?
Yeah. That is right here.
Is there going to be, um... Do we know if the development has its own signage package that... Do we know that?
I would think that they are going to have them at their main drives. But as far as the outlots...
Okay. Yeah, so I guess that was my only concern. It would seem to me that, like, for example, the Great Lakes Mall has, you know, the giant monument sign stating this is the mall, and it has sort of certain tenant areas that are with that. This would be additional signage. I wanted to make sure that that would conform to their development standards, whether it's going to be something low or whether 10-foot is allowable.
10-foot meets our sign code.
Thank you.
Anything else? Entertaining motion?
Motion to approve with, I have five conditions, and the second condition is going to be rewritten to say details of the masonry trash enclosure shall be provided with the final site plan and match the building. And then condition number five will be the no more than 15 spaces of parking are permitted in a continuous row, and the site plan shall be revised to include landscape islands.
Second.
For Mr. Valeri.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mrs. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Purgavick?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman? I'm going to have to throw a curveball at you.
Go ahead.
While you're there, sir. For item number 10, I've been doing a little bit of research, and I have to kind of obviously harmonize the city council's issuance of the conditional use permit for 9490 Diamond Center Drive with the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission as well. And so I am going to have to recommend that you reconsider the vote based upon the denial relative to the traffic access. Part of the Planning Commission's role, of course, is site development, and the conditional use permit having been issued by the city council. The question is, how does the traffic patterns relate to that? Pursuant to the code 113504, part of what is issued as a component of a conditional use permit is access and traffic. So that is within the purview of the conditional use permit. And in fact, in this particular case, item number, condition number four of the CUP issued by the city council is that the site traffic pattern and access shall be as depicted in Exhibit A attached here to and incorporated herein, which is what you've seen tonight. Based upon that, I have to advise you, I don't believe the commission has the jurisdiction to have denied the preliminary site plan based upon traffic access and that pattern. That is a, that is already a determined issue.
Motion to reconsider.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a second?
Does it have to be a dissenting?
It has to be a dissenting vote, or is that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Somebody needs to second it.
Voted no.
Somebody that said no has to second that.
I'll second.
Yeah, Purgavick.
There you go. The lot director's made a recommendation here, so...
But it's the reconsideration based upon denial for traffic flow.
Right.
Okay.
So I need a second?
You got one.
We do.
Purgavick.
Okay. A little louder second then. Jess, would you call the roll, please? This is a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider? Okay.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Just clarification. This is a motion to reconsider the vote?
Yes.
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 Mrs. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Purgavick?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
And again, I think I have to encourage you now to just set aside whatever your judgment may be with respect relative to the traffic access. That is, I have to conclude as a matter of law, no longer within your purview.
Okay.
So if there's other issues relative to the preliminary site plan, that certainly is, you know, still ripe for discussion.
I think the issues we're discussing were all traffic-related, so...
I agree, and that's kind of where my counsel had to...
Well, some people that objected did not associate that. They had all their reasons.
Okay.
Anyway.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with the previously listed nine conditions.
Second.
Mr. Valeri?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
No.
Mrs. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ms. Moritz?
Yes.
Mr. Purgavick?
No.
Mr. Sedoti?
No.
Mr. Snow?
Yes. So it passes four to three?
Four to three.
It's a good thing you hung around.
Yeah, thank you. I was about to skip out of here for the first one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate hearing that out. Again, I apologize, I took a little bit of research on my end.
And it wasn't appropriate, uh...
Didn't really know what the issue was until I heard the vote, so there was that, too.
I appreciate your reconsideration, and definitely Taco Bell does, too.
What's the timeline for these?
They're still in lease agreements with the Tyler Boulevard application, and then the Diamond Center Drive, we're going to start moving forward with site plan design and building design. We're hoping within a year to break ground on one of them. The other one would soon follow. Taco Bell tries not to overdo their construction efforts in one area at one time. But that's out of my realm of timeline, so I don't know. If I may, I know you have a couple other applications on the agenda, but I just wanted, you guys were talking about the bollards earlier, and where colors were not approved. A Taco Bell standard is to have a yellow bollard along their drive-through lane. It's an alarming color, so it, it, it...
Draws attention.
It draws attention that you're getting close to the building. They do do steel bollards. They do meet the 10 mile an hour impact. They do a vinyl, it's a hard plastic, slip-on cover. And what that does is allows vehicles to glance, and the cover will slip and spin as it hits it. There are multiple colors for them. Their standard is obviously yellow as an alarming color. Is that something that the board would prevent?
How does that, how does that fit?
Where are the, where on the drive-through are those?
There's one at the, uh... There would be one in this location, in that location, and in that location. There'd be three yellow bollards.
Will there be any on the east side of, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Zimmerman?
Will there be any on the east side of the eating area?
Yes. As we discussed earlier with the CUP, we will add additionals.
Will those be yellow?
And we can make those decorative, painted different color. They wouldn't need to be yellow. So...
I don't think we're able to answer that right now. I think if you have some discussion with Mr. Spence and off...
That's fine. I could definitely take this offline and discuss with...
That's the word I was looking for, offline.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Minor subdivision of one industrial lot to greet two industrial lots at 8643 East Avenue.
Joshua Strickland, Dorkin &amp; Bernstein.
I'm Katie Colbacher from Myers, Roman, Friedberg &amp; Lewis. We represent Air Products.
So give us a little insight as to what you want to do.
Sure. So generally speaking, this was one lot that is sort of the industrial, more industrial side of it was sold, and the, uh, ended up being somewhat convoluted. The seller is going to retain the parcel B, but the whole parcel was sold due to time constraints for closing within a lot split to then follow on the backside. So this is the, effectively, the retained parcel from the seller.
Mr. Spence, any comments from the administration?
Well, in the M1 district, light manufacturing, the minimum width for a split would be 150 feet. I think this is 100. So it doesn't meet the zoning code width. So in that instance, the Planning Commission and City Council has the authority to approve lots with less width or less area required by code. In this instance, there's no area requirement, it's just the width requirement.
Okay. Okay. Questions, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
I had a conversation earlier, but I want to put it on the record, the question, and that is, being that the new property lines are considerably closer to the building than the open environment that existed before, is it clear to the city that the allowable area of the building is in conformance with the building code?
I didn't get any comments back from the Building and Engineering Department on that.
Just to express my concern, and that is that once you remove the, the side yard areas that allow you to increase the buildable area, you no longer can factor that into the allowable area of the building. I'm not saying that it's in violation, I just have the question that by creating new boundaries, does the building code allow this building? Is it in conformance with the building code for allowable area? It's a question.
That I can't answer.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Valeri?
All we're doing is making a recommendation to council. Is that what you said, Mr. Spence?
Yes, your recommendation would be to council. Council makes the approval.
Thank you.
Mr. Sedoti?
You said parcel B is the retained parcel. Parcel A, he sold, or they sold.
Correct.
Are you at liberty to identify who bought parcel A?
Parcel A was bought by Air Products.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so what we have is we have a parcel, as Mr. Varga pointed out, that he's questioning the buildable area?
Correct.
And we have a lot that's non-conforming in terms of frontage. Is that correct, Mr. Spence?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just one other thought. Do we, are we able to meet all the parking requirements on the remaining lot for a building of that size?
They, the site plan, as you can see, doesn't have any detail as far as size of the buildings, the, at least I don't think it may have the size. I can't see it. It doesn't have any parking lot layout for either building.
So we don't know if it meets the parking requirement for a building of that size?
It'd be difficult to tell. I'm sure there's probably enough pavement area.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until we can get those things answered, both the parking, the layout of the, of the new proposed parcel, and a check. I'm not saying there's a problem, but just to check to verify that the size of the lot and the size of the building is in conformance with the building code allowable area.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jess?
Could I make a comment at this point before you guys take a vote? So the staff report that I'm in possession of seems to indicate that the building on parcel B is 5,561 square feet, and lists that it has seven parking spaces. Now, I know if you go out there, they're not well-stripped at the moment. In fact, you can't really tell where the parking is if you go out on the site, but the staff report at one point indicated seven parking spaces, so if that helps.
They're not, they don't show any of the config, the striping, the configuration.
We need more information.
I would agree that the site plan...
Jess, finish calling the roll, please.
Mr. Valeri?
No.
Motion to table, correct?
Correct. No.
Mr. Varga?
To table, yes.
Mrs. Zimmerman?
No.
Ms. Moritz?
No.
Mr. Purgavick?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Snow?
Yes.
Stabled.
Four to three, it's tabled. So do you, you understand what you need to provide? You guys both understand what you need to provide?
A recap is always helpful. So specifically, is the parking layout?
Parking layout.
For both sites.
Yeah, no, I would mention our reciprocal parking easements between the two parcels.
I'm bringing copies of those.
I think they were submitted.
We did get...
I don't have them in my bag.
We can get your copies without any problem.
And then the use, we need to know the uses in each building.
Need what?
The use.
What is the building being used for?
I don't think the uses have changed.
I don't know what they are.
Okay.
The use is light industrial. Both companies work in the same area. They work with liquid nitrogen provision.
Okay.
And if the chairman is not opposed, I actually have copies of the easement agreement and the survey.
Well, generally, we don't take any new information the night of the meeting, so we won't do that this evening.
Certainly. I believe that the surveys and reciprocal easements were previously provided.
This survey?
Correct.
Well, I think we want a survey showing the parking spaces, access drives, building setbacks.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the engineering comments were identify need for reciprocal easements for utilities and parking, so if they were provided, it's certainly something that probably didn't get appropriately routed, so, you know, apologies for that, but it sounds like it wouldn't hurt if you provided additional copies to us.
Absolutely.
Thank you, appreciate that.
It's a reciprocal utility easement as well, so it covers both items.
Okay.
And then let's recap the issue with the buildable square feet, because I'm not sure I understand that one completely.
Let me just explain my concern or my comment. The building code allows you to build certain-sized buildings in certain-sized areas based on the type of construction, the use of the building, and the occupancy, and its relationship to the property line. So if you've created new property lines that don't, no longer has, and if you have, for instance, 30 feet all the way around the building or more, you're allowed to increase the allowable area of the building. When this building was built, it was in a configuration where there was no property lines on two or three sides, and therefore, it may have been designed with additional allowable area because of that. If you move the property line and now you relinquished that 30 feet, or you may, the building's size may not be in conformance with the building code. I'm not saying it is, I just need to have that knowledge, that by putting the property lines where you want to put them, you don't create a conflict with the building code.
Thank you.
Item 12, miscellaneous review of plat modification at Lake Shore Highlands, Phase One. 13. Well, okay. Sorry, 13.
Good evening. Richard Summers, Summers Real Estate Group. When we submitted the subdivision plan for Lake Shore Highlands, I assume that it was an engineering error, but on Sub Lot 1 coming in, all these lots in this subdivision have a defined building area. It appears that we made a mistake or something was overlooked on Lot 1, and it only allowed for a 25-foot backyard. The front setback line is not in line with Lot 2, so what we're asking for is to change that front building line to fall in conformance with Lot Number 2. This is the proposed site plan for the building. It allows us to have a 50-foot backyard in lieu of a 25 under the original site plan, and we're asking to make this change to the plat.
Mr. Spence, any comments?
Yeah, it'd be a recommendation from the Planning Commission to City Council to modify Sub Lot 1 to change the setback requirement. Instead of, it was planted in an 86-foot setback, and I think they want to go to a 66.5 front setback, and from the administration's... Instead of, it was planted in an 86-foot setback, and I think they want to go to a 66.5 front setback, and from the administration's viewpoint, it makes sense. Otherwise, you're going to have a house, and it's going to be a model home, so it may not sell for a couple of years, but I think it would be difficult to sell that house when you see that your backyard is only, you know, about 25 feet of backyard, so...
Okay. Mr. Chairman, any question? Mr. Valeri.
Not even relevant. Where's the dream house going to go?
Across the street on lot 13, and what we're doing there is that lot backs up to the church parking lot, so we're working on, we're going to put a sidewalk, temporary sidewalk into the church parking lot, so that can be used for parking.
Got it. Motion to approve with one condition?
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Minor subdivision to adjust the property line in 9110 Jackson Street.
This is a project at Creekside on Jackson Street that we previously looked at this evening. Acquired this particular parcel approximately 1.5 acres from Mr. Brunkhaller next door. His home is near the property line, and as part of the sale agreement, we agreed with your approval to add some land from the lot he's selling to the lot that his existing house is on. This allows us to get approximately a five-foot rear side yard now to approximately 25, and gives him some privacy. There'll also be a 15-foot buffer next to this, so it gives him some privacy. It just is a, we feel a good planning item and way to go.
Mr. Spence, any concerns?
Well, as far as, the lot at 9110 is currently non-conforming as far as the width of the property at the front setback, the 60-foot setback. It will be increased, but it still doesn't meet the code, so the planning commission would make a recommendation to city council, and city council would approve the minor subdivision. No, I think it makes sense, plus the guy's drive runs down that east side of that property line, so it'd give him a little more room.
Okay. Commissioners, questions?
Motion to approve with one condition.
Second.
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 15, retail building at 9324 Mentor Avenue.
Hello.
Hi.
You brought the A-team today, huh?
What? By myself. Joe Longo, 9324 Mentor Avenue, sorry. We're looking to redo, reface Rich's Lounge to two individual roughly 1,440-square-foot retail. And this is about as accurate as we can get on a colored rendering, lighter gray in the front and showing darker on the sides, but we are going to repaint all three, all four existing sides. I was informed today, the only slight issue may be that we can, instead of putting the three, three-foot windows in the front, we might have to go with two four-foot, because the masonry guy's a little worried about maybe the potential structure not being strong enough to do it.
Can't support it?
Possibly. I want the three, but we may have to go with just two.
Mr. Spence, any comments?
It's going to look better than it is. It's an improvement.
A truck accident would look better than it is.
Hey, come on, it's my building you're talking about.
Commissioners, questions?
I could leave it, if you want. It's an option also.
Do you have a sample of the...
I have a sample of the awning, yes, we're just going to go with the black vinyl. And the colors, this, I mean, I have the Sherwin-Williams numbers of what they're looking at. The reason we can't keep it existing brick color is because once they put all those holes in, there's just no way they're going to be able to match it. I mean, that was our first thought, keep it the same color, but it's just pretty beat up.
Ms. Chairman.
Mrs. Zimmerman.
Since you brought up the color.
Yes.
So, in this rendering that you gave to us, you can actually see the color of the building that it's adjacent to, which you are very familiar with, I'm sure.
Right.
And when I went out to look at it today, or yesterday, so that building is a red, red brick.
Rash brown, yeah.
Yeah, more red than brown, but yes. And then your, the pastina end is a cultured stone, so it's more of a brown. Gray doesn't seem to go with either one of those.
Gray's the new brown.
Yeah.
That's what my painter told me.
Uh-huh. How about brown is the new brown? And I agree, the building does look beat.
No, I did go back and forth with that, to be honest with you. I was talking with the guy that wants to repaint it, and my sister, we were kind of liking the gray. It'll be, it'll add some more color to there, instead of it being exactly the same color as the shopping center that's there.
I don't want it exactly the same color, but I was hoping that maybe if you, I was thinking about balancing it with, you know, the pastina being kind of brown, this would be kind of brown, then you have the red in the middle.
I'm with you, but I'm not, like I said, I'm kind of, we're liking the gray more that we're talking about it.
Well, I like gray too, but just not in this building.
I think it's going to look good, gray. Want to see it bigger? It's cost me 200 bucks if you're going to show it to you.
Anything else?
Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Valeri.
Recommendation was to bring a painted brick.
I'm sorry?
Recommendation in here from the administration said to bring a painted brick for us, so we can see what we're dealing with.
Rick told me to bring a...
Painted brick?
What's that?
I thought I said bring building material sampling. You said you'd bring a painted brick.
I thought they wanted to see what the painted brick was going to be, so I painted to the actual colors. I can get a painted brick before we paint it, I have no problem with that. Is there a, is it because you want, is it because of brown, or just...
I struggle when we paint brick buildings.
I do too. I wanted to keep it original, it's just the mason that's doing it says there's just no way they're going to salvage enough out of there.
I voted no plenty of times when people want a pink brick. So I get it, the building, once you start putting in a whole bunch of new holes and...
Yeah, but it's from 1964. I'm not going to find anything remotely close in that brick.
Right.
I really wish I could keep it that way.
Right, and I get that, it's just, I'm, I don't know. Picture's hard. Xerox machines really don't work that well sometimes, so you don't know what you're really looking at, and as trivial as it may be, that's why having that brick that's painted sometimes helps us.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, I can get...
What's your timeframe on this?
Well, I'm going to get it, we're done, we're, you know, we had approval to do the inside, we're doing that right now, so... So when's the next meeting, in a month?
Three weeks.
Three weeks? Yeah, I don't think I'm going to be doing it by three weeks.
Mr. Chairman? So, let Mr. Valeri finish.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
If that's not going to impede your timeframe...
I don't think it will.
Okay, then if you table and just get us...
Yeah, I should have my two and a half hours back, but, yeah.
It was quality time.
Yeah. Think how much you learned.
I learned that I brought a rendering and Taco Bell didn't. Those were preliminary...
That was just preliminary site plan.
They've got to come back for final, and they'll burn samples.
Mr. Varga, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment, and it has to do with the color. I would have liked the natural brick, you said you'd like that too, can't get that, I understand. And this has to do with the nature of how you reproduce colors, and you don't really know what we're looking at, but there's such a thing as a warm gray and a cool gray. I think this would look a lot better if it was the warm gray, because it would be a little more in sync with the warmer colors of the other building next to it. It makes, it doesn't seem like a big deal, but it actually makes a big difference. So when you think about this in three weeks, think about finding a warm gray color to paint the building. My recommendation.
Is there any other issues that I should be worried about in three weeks, or just color?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment as well.
Mr. Perkovic?
This is related to Mr. Varga's comment. I too was going to recommend the warm brown, if that works for the painting. The other thing that you might want to look at is, you know, if you've got a designer that's doing the tenant drawings or the build-out, if you were to, instead of doing the separate windows, whether they're three or two, if you were actually create a new header of some sort, where you actually would remove that section, and then infill that with either, you know, a storefront type of glass, or if you go to like downtown Willoughby type thing, where they've got the panel trim and it's painted a different color, let's say black to match your awnings, then that portion is infilled, and it's framed in this new material, and then you're not trying to match, so that could be another option that you want to explore, and then that would kind of give you the ability to keep that brick in the existing color.
Did anyone go by it? Because it's severely damaged. I mean, there's faces missing off pieces, there's black stuff, and we took that structure down because I thought it was going to fall down on its own.
Right.
The mason's just telling me that there's just no way that he's going to be able to, because he doesn't, my first option was to go bigger windows, so that was an option. He says, that's why, he says there's, you have to do individual windows, because of the weight that's upstairs. So for us to, he wants to, he's thinking he wants to see more space in between the windows, that's why he's considering going with two instead of the three. So instead of having a two-foot, he wants it to be at least three-foot for structural. And this building being so old, I'm not going to, I'm not pushing that issue. If he thinks we should go with two, I'm going to put two, because I don't want to have to deal with a structural issue.
Right, okay.
Because, and I also think two four-foot windows in a glass door, on each side of that, is going to probably be enough glass anyways, to bring in more light.
Right, and again, this was just another option to explore.
I'll ask.
Versus the painting. And I do agree, if paint is the option, I do think that there are grays that would match a little bit better than just what we typically think of as gray.
Gray of your shirt is kind of what it's close to.
Warm gray.
Right. Well, I agree. I'll bring the Sherwin-Williams numbers, and then we'll bring a painted brick for the side and for the back.
And I think it's going to look fantastic. I think just the awnings are going to make a big difference, but...
Working with what we got, we wanted to try and keep it as old-looking building as possible.
Mr. Valeri lost his wallet in there when it was the richest tavern.
I enjoyed going there.
Motion to table.
Listen, if you grew up in Mentor, you had your first drink here when you were 16.
Through a second.
Second.
Jess?
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes. Last item, miscellaneous review of parking lot in the front setback at 8477, 8507 Tyler.
You'd be off the new bits, old business. It would be close.
Good evening. I'm Rich Cantanz Brady with Land Design Consultants. I'm here with Tony Napier and Rich Mirs from Component Repair Technologies. And my client is looking to remove their existing parking lot from in front of 8507, and replace it with a, basically doubling their parking closer to Tyler Boulevard along the roadway with the landscaping and the 30-foot buffer from the right away.
Mr. Spence, comments from the administration?
Yeah, the code allows for limited parking in the, at a 30-foot setback with landscaping and mounding approved by the planning commission.
Okay.
I would indicate this is very limited compared to the number of parking spaces that are located at Component Repair Technologies site.
Okay. Commissioners, questions?
Ms. Chairman.
Mrs. Zimmerman.
Presently, they're at a 60-foot setback, is that correct?
50, I think.
I'm just looking at the print.
It is 60.
Okay, so that's, so you're decreasing that to...
30.
50 is what's required by code.
Okay. And I'm looking at what's existing, it's just, you're not going to really be, you'll be adding how many spaces then, about?
Dublining parking lot in front there, from 27 to 54. They're also anticipating, you know, some future development, other site developments down the road, which is what they're...
So the reason for this is, business is good? Okay. And you wanted to keep it good?
I want to continue. Keep it going.
There you go. Okay, any other questions? You entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with two conditions.
Second.
Jess?
Mr. Valeri.
Yes.
Mr. Varga.
Yes.
Mrs. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Ms. Moritz.
Yes.
Mr. Perkovic.
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti.
Yes.
Mr. Snow.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Spence, director's report. Anything?
No.
You entertain a motion to adjourn.
Anything.
Motion to adjourn.
So, move second, third.